Ready? I'll call and order the special meeting in the Paradise Irrigation District Board of Directors, Wednesday, August 31st at 4:00 PM. Roll call, please.
Director Hutt?
Here.
Vice President Fenchel?
Here.
Dr. Kellal?
Here.
Director Jacobson?
Here.
Director Kellal?
Here. Thank you, Georgianne. Everybody. At this time, I ask everybody to please silence your cellphone. If you have to take a phone call, please step outside to do so, as to not disturb the meeting. If everybody would stand with me, we'll do the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, public participation. Individuals to be given an opportunity to address the board regarding matters not on the scheduled agenda. Although, the board cannot take action on any matter not on the agenda. Comments will be limited to five minutes per speaker. Opportunity for public comment on agenda items will be provided at the time they are discussed by the board, with comments limited to five minutes per agenda item. Is there anybody at this time that wants to speak to something that is not on our today agenda? Not seeing any. Move on from there. Part B, possible board discussion or clarification concerning public participation. So, I don't know who changed this or put this on there.
It's been on this second time.
Well, the clarification part, we had-
Since there wasn't any participation-
Just meant the tenant's over the board-
The board can talk about it.
Okay. Got it. Okay. It looked like it was written differently this time than the first time, so that's why. Old business. We, item number three, approval to purchase 4,000 gallons of zinc ortho-phosphate for the water treatment plant. I think this is what Director Jacobson was asking about.
I can handle this one.
Okay.
So, Jim went out for proposals from multiple vendors, and some of them, it took a while for him to come back with their proposals. So, he didn't feel like it was, he didn't have enough time to really go through each one of the proposals, to understand each one of the makeups and what their, I don't know, what the-
Ramifications of using them.
Ingredients and all that stuff of each one of their proposals. And so, he decided to postpone this till the next board meeting. He felt like there was plenty of supply to get him through to the next board meeting, and so, he felt like he didn't want to rush it to you guys without all of the information coming forward, so.
Good. So, if we have a month then to work on this?
We have less than a month, because the next board meeting-
Okay.
-the 21st, I believe.
I brought a listing of NSF 60 zinc ortho-phosphate manufacturers, their contact information, and all their listed products. There's probably over 50 of them here. And, so, if he wants to get some real competitive pricing, this is a good place to start.
So, I'll take it and give-
Give that to Kevin, and then he'll relay it over to Jim.
This is every NSF potable listed zinc ortho-phosphate solution in the United States, right there.
Perfect.
And they all have local representatives, too.
Okay.
Thank you, Cliff.
I will pass this on to him, and then on next board meeting, we'll discuss that again. So, if we can just table this to the next board meeting.
Yep. I'm just going to table item 3A until our next regular scheduled board meeting. Onto new business. Item A, budget presentation for fiscal year 2016-2017. Kevin Phillips, please lead us into that.
Okay. So, I kind of created a PowerPoint presentation to go over some of the highlights, some of the big overview of the budget itself, and over some of the capital projects, some of the challenges we're going to be facing, and I'll work through that. And then, if there's questions that we want to dig into the details, I'll then take questions. Some of the people have already seen this presentation. It's the same presentation that I gave in the budget workshops that we did, so we'll just kind of fire away. So, here are some of the financial highlights. The prior year cash estimation, so, the actual cash decrease that we saw over the last year was $1.3 million. We actually budgeted that we were going to decrease in cash of $1.85 million, so that we actually were ahead of what we budgeted. That, though, was a budget that the board knew was not sustainable. That was a budget that was going to need rate increases to sustain itself. So, that, the $1.3 million isn't something that we want to cheer about. It's something that actually is, it was a decrease to the district with the rate increase that was put into place and some of the cuts. We will see a increase, as you will see in the next couple slides, of what we're estimating going forward. But, this last year was quite a bit of a decrease in the cash of the district. That cash was, a lot of it was reserved for capital projects, and a lot of that cash came out of the capacity fees that we had sitting out there. Our net capital outlay budget, actual, the variance, or budget to actual, was actually 411 less than what we budgeted. So, the negative means it's less than what we budgeted. So, our actual was less than our budgeted. And our operational pipeline expenses, and I'm just going to kind of say this right now, operation and pipeline expense, you'll see it kind of broken out, broken out both in throughout the budget, but really, that's the combination of our operations. To combine both of them as our operations, we break them out because we capitalize pipeline expense and we don't capitalize operational expense. That's why it's broken out, to say what we're doing for capital projects, or what we are putting into the ground. But, really, the combination of the two is our operational expenses. And again, we were 414,000 less than what we actually budgeted last year. The bad thing is, is that we actually, our revenue budget was almost 500,000 less than what we budgeted. So, that was a bad thing. And that was due to the drought. Just the consumption decrease, the consumption revenue decrease that we saw throughout the drought was about $500,000 knocked to the district. So, overall, we are about, well, $500,000 positive of the budget, but if we didn't have the drought, we would have been way further ahead of budget than what we actually came So, current year budget. First one I'm going to point out is, well, again, the operation and pipeline expense. Those two are really our operational expenses. So, we're budgeting about $5.8 million for operation. That includes salaries, benefits, supplies, outside services, legal, anything that is a normal operational expense is included in that. Our capital improvement budget is $16.4 million. 5.5 of that is the process water recycle project. So, but what I want to point out is below that-
Five? You said 5.1.
5.5 million.
15.5, sorry. 15.5 million, sorry. I'm also including below that, I'm going to see if I can get my laser pointer here. We have debt proceeds that we're also budgeting of $17 million. Yeah.
I thought we put in for $20 million.
20 million was the, what we put on the resolution, because you always overestimate what you feel like you're going to borrow. Right now, the project borrowings is at $16.5 million. That includes design and construction. So, that's what our estimate is right now, and that's what I'm going to budget right now. So, when we finally do get the design back, we'll get construction estimates that we'll actually go to loan for those amounts. But, right now, that's what we're going to put in there. There's another five-
Any idea where that loan is for approval, or whatever?
I do. I met with the state revolving fund yesterday, actually. I sat down with them to figure out where my section was and what they still needed from me from a financial section. And, from my section, we're about six weeks out. The problem is, is you have to have every section done before they'll fund your loan. And, so, there's a general section, a project section, a financial section, and an environmental section. And the environmental section is the part that is the hardest, because you have to go through your SEQA process before they'll fund your loan. And so, we have our consultants that are working on the SEQA process, and once the SEQA process is done on their side, then the state then has to review the SEQA process. And that could take some time also, because then there's a conversation going back and forth. If the state doesn't have, think they have all what they needed, then they're going to go back to the consultant and say, "You need to do X, Y, and Z." So, and that could take six months to get done. We're hoping that it's not going to take that long. We're encouraging a sit-down coming up shortly between the consultant and the state to figure out where we are at and how much longer it's going to be. So, from that aspect, I'm hoping by the end of the year that we'll have it. Right now, the interest rate is at 1.7%, which is outstanding. And we are also looking into either some debt forgive, principal forgiveness, based on the project being a green project, or some other type of debt forgiveness or principal forgiveness based on disadvantaged community things that we've looked at.
State programs.
All state programs, but because they're a state, the state program themselves, and they have opportunities to kind of take those grants and apply them to the loan. So, that right there is offsetting the capital improvement. And you can see that it's actually a little bit more than what our capital improvement program is. It's because we're going to get reimbursed for some of the design monies that we've already expended. So, some of those funds that we've already expended in past budgets will be paid in the current budget, what we're hoping for if we get funded for this. Our debt service is at $1.2 million. There's more detail coming back. So, our total expenditures are $23.7 million. Those will be offset by revenues of $25.7 million. That includes water sales of $7.67 million. Other income, that includes custom work that we do. That also includes monies that we're hoping to get from partnering with the Paradise Fire Department and doing a combined project, a pipeline project that is beneficial to both. And so, we've been identifying projects that have leaky pipes, but also bad fire flows. And if we can come to an agreement with them, then what has normally happened is there's a cost share of a 50/50 cost share on that. So, we do the work, but half of our labor supplies and equipment are all paid through the Fire Department Fund. So, that includes some monies also for that portion. The 1% property tax is just the property tax that we get from this, oh, sorry.
How much money is available in the Fire-
$500,000.
Is there now?
Yes. We haven't done too many projects in there. It's been sitting-
I just wondered, because we hadn't done it much of anything except replace-
So, I think last year, we collected 120,000 of revenue, and we spent 23,000. So, that's 100,000 net revenue of their fund continuing to go up. So, they have quite a bit of money sitting there, the four projects.
How are we going to come up with matching funds?
Our matching funds are all going to be paid through operations. Other than the supplies, the supplies are one of the smallest expense of pipeline replacement. It's, a lot of it is labor. And so, our labor is already encumbered. It's already included in this budget. So, really-
Going to be able to do this with reduced crews?
I'm hoping so. Yeah. We're looking at pipes, pipeline projects that are not in major thoroughfares, that are a little bit off of the street, and that aren't in large sizes that are going to be ones that we can't do. So, with that, we, I think we could-
You're going to replace a lot of these small pipes? We don't even have the water necessary for fire control.
Right. We're looking at places that are off of main thoroughfares that have low fire flows. Correct. So, we're trying to come to an agreement with the Fire Department. They're, I'm not sure if they're wanting to do that specifically at this point, but we're hoping they will. I know that Skyway is one of their big ones that they want to replace, but Skyway is not one that we could do ourselves, or come up with the matching funds to do something like that.
Okay, so, we're talking about current year budgets here, but you're talking about 2016, 2017 now, right?
Which is our current year budget.
Yeah, why are we doing two-year budget? Never done it before.
Two-year budget, because I felt like it was a good time to look forward into what the revenue increases were going to be. And I think that it's a, it's a good display. I'm not going to, it's not going to be set in stone, and none of our budgets are set in stone, but I think it's a good idea to kind of see where the future's going to go, especially with some of the rate increases that we've put into effect, which are the three-year rate increases.
Just by chance, are you figuring any of the politics that's going on in this town right now?
Oh, absolutely. Definitely. I don't think that hiding information is beneficial to anybody.
I'm not talking about hiding. I'm talking about going ahead for another year.
No, I think it's, I think it's a, I think it's a good way to understand where you're going into the future. I would do a five-year budget if I could, but I, at this point, I think two years is where I was limiting myself. And it's industry standard. It's always, it's always good to see kind of a two-year budget rolling forward.
Well, I just was familiar with one-year budgets ever since I've been on the board. Then see a two-year, and I go, I know this, there's not much change. It's almost like it's a photocopy of the year before.
And that's pretty much what it is. You're not taking into consider, or you're not, there's not a ton of change. The only change that you're seeing are those one-time expenses that you're going to be using in one budget that you're not going to be using in others. And the other thing, too, is that you're going to see the revenue increase from, the revenue increase from one budget to the next, which is going to show where our cash position's going to be going forward.
On these water sales, is that based on the rate increase and the base rate? Or is that based on the assumption that we're going to have normal usage again and have quantities?
It is, and I have another slide that'll take that, but what I'll say is it's based on six months of our current rates, six months of the rates as of 117, which those are going to increase. And the consumption is based on 2014's consumption, 90% of it. So, we took 2014's consumption and we reduced it 10% to make an estimation. And that's all, I mean, that was our, kind of our shot, shot in the dark on where we felt like maybe people would come back to. The one thing, though, is that included in the service charge now is $700,000 of reserving revenue, or reserving, yeah, reserving revenue in there. So, what we looked at was, what if everybody decided not to go back to 2014, 90%, and they stayed at 2015? And to see where that would fluctuate our revenue? And it's exactly $700,000. So, it's exactly that $700,000 reserving amount that we have in there. So, basically, what would happen was, we would actually not reserve anything that year. So, it would be kind of a break-even year in a way, you know? So, there wouldn't be that increase that we're trying to look for to build up those reserves, but we wouldn't be in a position like we are currently.
How much do we have in reserves now?
About $1,003,000.
Is that-
It's very, it's historically low. It's historically low. It's something where you don't want to be. It needs to be built up.
Because we've been paying out for our project. Yeah, we've been paying for our projects till our loan comes through. That will be, that will be increased back up, though.
When that loan comes through-
When the loan comes through, then-
You will get that cash influx of repayment of those-
Funds we've already used.
Correct.
Well, it won't actually be money coming in. It'll be money we borrowed that we owe.
Well, but it replaces, but it replaces our reserve funds that we've already used, cash out of hand.
But it will be revenue, it will be cash coming in that is, but that, but the debt service that you're going to pay that back with is already included in your rates going forward. So, it's not like it's coming in and going back out, because you actually have already included that in your operation revenue, once that loan does become due. So, we are paying for that loan without those funds, having to go back out.
I need credit. Okay.
1% property tax. Okay, we went through that. The agency set property tax revenue. That is a revenue that we get from the property tax to pay the Davis Grinsky loan that was taken out in 1977. This is actually the last year that that revenue will be coming in and we'll have, having to be paying that debt service. So, that loan falls off as of this year. Facility fees, those are just, you know, that's, yeah, facility fees, those are fees that we just collect from rent and different things like that. Investment income, actually, no, facility fees, those are capacity fees. I don't know why it's called facility fees. Those are the capacity fees that we're estimating. Who knows? If we get 25, we might get 50. It's, again, it's just based on building-
We might get five.
We might get five. Investment income, that's our interest gain-loss on investment that we get. Again, that's at a historically low, too. I mean, obviously, that's, go ahead.
How much money do we have in our investments?
About $1.2 million. All of our reserves are in our investments. Yeah.
Their return, well, Larry can probably answer that. 220,000 is how much return on a million three, or your percentage?
2%.
Less than 2%?
Yeah.
Less than 2%?
It's just not, there's not, there's not anything out there right now. You know, and a lot of it, we need to keep liquid, because we're constantly having to pay out. So, what we can invest for long terms, we're trying to get the best rate we possibly can, but there's just nothing out there right now.
If this reserve is having to be used, is it going down then?
Our reserve continues to go down as we pay out for projects that we don't have the borrowings for.
Until we get the loan.
Correct. It's actually not going down at this point, due to the fact that we have rates coming in that are covering things, and that we're actually, the rates include building up the reserves. We should not see the reserves continuously tick down, so. And then, I went over those debt proceeds. So, it's hard to see, but this is kind of the-
Can you guys see that out there?
I don't know why that thing's not in better focus, but I'll use a pointer, too, to kind of highlight some of the stuff. This is a detail of just what we went over. So, if you can see, there's our water sales. So, and I'll point this out here, water sales right here. That's our biggest increase from actual, from last year's actual to this year's budget. And we're actually increasing our water sales $1.8 million, which is a 32% increase, which that number should not be shocking or surprising to anybody. And that's about what the rate increase was, was about a 32% increase. And that, that's what is driving the increase in our budget down here, too. So, we budgeted, again, 7.6 million in water sales. The outside water sales, that's what we treat for Del Oro and send up to Paradise Pines. They deliver water from PG&E into our reservoir, and we deliver it. Other income, again, includes some of that PFD funds, the interest, rip, and that's it. And then, down here, we got operations. So, the operations actually are very close to actuals of last year. There isn't much change at all. One of the big changes in operation, really, was we had to, we got our increase for our medical insurance, this last, that's going to be effective 1-1 of '17, and it was a 12% increase. And so, that is, so there's six months of a 12% increase in that operations, which is probably the biggest driving force in any increase in that operations. But, we're still, it also includes holding three positions open for nine months of the budget. Three months of that is, they are budgeted to bring three positions back onboard. And the temps, there is no temps for this current construction season, but we also included three months of temps at the end of this budget. So, at the end of the day, what we're budgeting is that we are going to actually have an increase before, before capital of $1.4 million. And then, we have a cap, debt proceeds of $17 million, and our capital improvement program of $16.4 million, and increase in decreasing cash, or increase in cash of $2 million, which we're, hopefully, will bring us almost back up to $4 million in reserves, and that is where we should be. We should actually be higher than that. But, that's, that's, that's bringing us back to almost whole.
Could you explain the cash available for capital projects, 18 million there? Give me a little explanation on that.
Oh, yeah. What, all it's doing is it's taking in those debt proceeds, because normally, all your debt proceeds, when you borrow debt, you're doing it for capital. So, what we're showing is that, okay, here's our operational net income, and now, we're going to borrow money to bring in for capital, and so, we're going to kind of show the conglomerate of all of that.
Which is the, which is the process water, so that everybody understands it's the process water.
But, before the process, that's before we pay for that process water.
Yes, exactly.
So, we borrowed money, we've had some net incomes, and now, we got 18 million, and now, we're going to go and pay out all the capital out of that 18 million. And then, that's where you kind of come with that leftover money is that you're going to reserve. So, this is the challenges that I see going forward, and for this current budget, but also for, for going forward budgets. Water rates, obviously, that's a hot topic in the district. And trust me, no one, no one wants to raise rates, ever. I mean, trust me, I'm the last one that would like to do that. But, obviously, that was, that was a decision that we had to make. And without, without that, this budget would be broken. I mean, we would be so far underwater, it would not be funny. The statewide drought, I think that we're still dealing with that, with the recovery of bringing normal water use back. You know, there's, there's this, there's two points of thoughts within water usage. For me, I love high water usage. I think high water is great. I think normal water usage is great, because it balances the district. There's not this big jumps and ups and downs. If everybody was consistent, that would be great for us. But, that's not how water usage is. It has peaks and valleys. It has not only peaks and valleys from month to month, but peaks and valleys from year to year. And so, I think the statewide drought really hurts us financially, and that's something that we're having to try to recover from in the next couple budgets.
Did you see where three entities didn't turn in that study about how much money they could do in three years? And they have to save 33% now?
Really?
Yeah.
Wow.
They're being punished, and they have to, even though they may have a lot of water.
Yeah, they didn't, they didn't do the actual calculation.
They didn't do the capitalization, so they're being punished.
Yeah. Process water recycle project, I think that is our biggest challenge in this current budget, because it is such a large expense. It's, according to what I've heard, a necessary project or a necessary thing, it's probably the least sexy project that you can actually build, I think, from a customer standpoint. So, I think it's a challenge for us to really give the information to the customers to understand exactly what they're investing in, because it truly isn't an investment. They're paying for something that is an infrastructure that we are putting into place. So, it's an investment into this project. What the benefit of it is, I mean, we're going to be gaining water without that, but I guess the biggest thing is, is we're getting out of the state's hair and out of their-
We're getting the state out of our hair.
Yeah, right.
Which is a hard, it's a hard one to explain.
We're not getting out of the state's hair, we're getting them out of ours.
What's the estimated cost of 500 acre feet of water? What's the value of it?
That's a tough question. I, you know, and I don't know that, per se, because to actually, for us to get that amount of water, we would have to go, I think, I think probably the easiest way would be to go down the hill, out of the Misen Canal, and pump it into our reservoir. And that's quite, quite an expense. I just don't know, there's just not a lot of water available for them just to deliver to us into our reservoir, so.
Well, I'm just curious, if we, if we try to look at that as a savings by doing the project, what's it worth?
Yeah. No, I totally hear you.
What do we charge an acre fee?
What do we charge?
What do we charge an acre?
Like, retail price? Are you asking, yeah, retail price, or what we charge Del Oro? Are you asking, yeah, retail price or what we charge Del Oro?
The retail price to our customers an acre foot.
And I, I don't have that number off the top of my head, so I'm not, I'm not exactly sure. I think it was.
Didn't we charge?
Nine hundred dollars.
Yeah, nine hundred was Del Oro.
Something like that, as I, I think we calculated one spell.
That's what we sold to the.
Nine oh four.
Nine hundred dollars.
It's, it's a lot more now, though.
Nine hundred times five hundred.
No, that, Larry's.
Four, four hundred fifty thousand.
Huh?
So.
Four hundred fifty thousand.
So it's a, so it's a half a million dollars a year roughly worth of water
In perpetuity.
We're able to recapture and reuse and instead of it going on the ground.
Plus, we are also eliminating the cost of the permit.
Yeah, no, no, I get that.
And adjusting, too.
I get that, but when we're looking at what the project's going to cost us, we're looking at the pluses and the minuses.
And I think that's a good number to throw out there, for sure, because, and it, and it's, and it's water savings in perpetuity, too, so it's not one-year water savings.
I understand that's not a firm figure. It depends on the rainfall and the year, what, that kind of savings, if this is a rough estimate, I don't.
Yeah, not.
Hang our hats on something.
I'm not saying we, we hang our hats on anything, actually. I mean, just like I said, I, it's a hard question to answer. I mean, it truly is, because, you know, it, it's the same thing with the meter project, is how much water did it really save you? I don't know, you know? I know it did save the district some water. It got us through this drought. Well, what's the cost? What's, what's the value of that? I, I don't know, you know?
No employees driving around, risking getting hit by cars and lawsuits and.
But, you know, it's, it's a value, it's a value that you're.
You can't put a dollar amount on it.
That you're projecting or you're, you're estimating that someone else might say, that's not correct, and how are you going to argue that? I mean, so. There is water savings.
Yeah.
I think that's.
The dollar, we don't know.
But, yeah, what's the dollar figure?
Well, the exact dollar, the rough dollar, we got an idea.
Well, but.
So.
Like you said, you don't want to hang your hat on it because if it rains, the water's going to be cheaper, and if it doesn't rain, then it's going to be more expensive.
Magalia Dam, I think that's a long-term problem that we, we are faced with, but we're looking at current solutions. So we're, we're, we didn't, we, there's nothing in this budget that has any dollars for that, but there is monies that we, or there's monies available out there that we're constantly looking for to try to get some type of funding for a design for, for any type of solution for that, so that's, it's definitely on the purview.
That's really going to have to be a state or federal-funded pro, dam, I mean.
Right, and so we've gone to the feds. That's who are looking for money for that, is the feds.
On page eighteen, you have a process water recycle plant, fifteen million, five hundred thousand, in the budget, you have it for sixteen million, five hundred thousand or seventeen million. It seems to grow.
So, so I'll get to the, I'll get to the capital. The capital actually has a few other items in there, so that's fifteen point five plus a few other items.
Where we're at on this section here, though, first on, before we leave the Magalia.
Yeah.
So under renewal of the district's water rights permit, because we talked about that earlier, the, says the district contracted with an environmental firm and completed a study. The results of their study could impact our ability to expand our water storage of the maximum permitted under our original water rights permit.
Correct.
We're talking about perfecting that, and then we had to know our capacities, and so that study's been completed. I thought that was one of the things that we still had to do in order to perfect or, or apply for our water usage.
Right, I, my understanding is, and this, George would have better, a better understanding, but my understanding is that they've done the work and that they've submitted it to Water Rights Board for comment. The Water Rights Board has sat on this for, I think, almost two years because they've been dealing with the drought.
They had the drought.
Yeah.
They had other things there.
And then a little bit further down.
Other fish in the pan.
On Magalia Dam, you said the district's working with Buke County and Senator Feinstein's office to seek funding. So are, where are we at on that? Is, is there something really concrete that's done?
Nothing's concrete. We've put it in the county's plan because we felt like we would be working directly with them to try to have a four-lane highway across the dam for, for escape out of Magalia, and that we could actually then have a new dam also on the top of that thing. Senator Feinstein was, her office, we talked to her water people in her office downtown San Francisco, and they were very interested in it. She, they said that Feinstein office is very interested in storage projects, but right now, it's, it moves like anything else. We were named in one of her bills for funding for the process water recycle project, but I don't know if that bill ever got through Congress.
Would, would any of that commit us to giving a certain volume of that water that would ultimately end up part of this tunnel project or increased amounts that we have to donate? Would that be included?
That's all, it's, it's very speculative. If you were able, so there's, there's one, when you're, when you build the dam, you can actually, you could actually build more storage than you have rights for if you obligated those rights to downstream users, being environmentalist or environmental projects.
Kevin, we're, we're virgin on some closed-session items here.
Right, but, but that's, that's kind of the.
Basically, the information is there.
That, that's, that's the idea.
On page fifteen, it says, under renewal of the district's water rights permit, the last sentence in the first paragraph says that, dealing with the drought, the ER, EIR should be restarted during the fiscal year two sixteen and seventeen. It's not indicating it's done.
So they've, they've, they've completed their work. They've completed.
Well, why hasn't it been presi, presented to the board?
Because we're waiting, because we gave it to the.
The state has it.
To the state to review.
They haven't done that.
Waiting for the state to have comments back so that they can then continue their work. We haven't paid them all of their fees either, so they're still.
So it isn't really done yet?
They've complete, yeah, they, it's not done. The EIR is not done. The IR would come to you guys.
Our portion is done, preliminary portion is done. We've given it to the state, they've got to do their portion, they give it back to us. Maybe they want something, maybe they don't.
Right.
Who knows?
The comment, they're going to have comments.
Odds are, they do.
Yeah.
So we won't know what our next step is until the state finishes theirs.
I've been asking for two, two years for some sort of report on this.
Well, and, and it's still in the same spot.
Even if one is not complete, I would like to see the report. Whatever's been, work's been done so far.
I'm sure you can see the report.
I haven't seen it, so, but, I mean, if you, you can ask George on that one. I'm come, I'm actually completely out of the loop on, on, on that one, other than when bills come in, I wish they hadn't come in in three years, so I just know that we still have an outstanding contract with them.
He did tell us what was going on with it when it was submitted, but yes, we haven't seen an update on it, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I get what you're saying, Bill. You're asking for an update on it, but unfortunately, the state hasn't done anything, so there is no update, so.
No, I'm not asking for that. I'm asking for what we.
What was submitted to the state.
So you can get that from George at any time. It's always been available.
I don't think so. I've asked a couple of times and not get any answer. Yours is a better answer, but you're not George.
I'll, I'll try to pass that on to him and see.
Thank you.
See if you can get that. Aging pipeline infrastructure, we still have sixty miles of steel pipe out there that we're trying to replace in-house. Some of them are larger pipes that we would actually go off for contract. Right now, we're not looking to go out, especially in this budget or next year's budget, to go out to any type of contracted pipeline replacement, but we're trying to continue to do them in-house and pick on the ones that are giving us the most problems. And then wildland fires, I think that's constantly, and I think that, again, goes with the PFD, working with the PFD to kind of make sure that we have a good, good fire flows around the district. And, and also, we, we're doing a lot of work up by the lake to make sure that we're doing clearing, brush clearing, to make sure that our forest up there that we're in charge of is, is healthy.
Is the water that the fire department uses included in our leakage?
Unaccounted for water, I believe it is.
Yeah.
I thought it was.
Yeah.
Which is very, very low.
Very low.
Yeah.
Here's our revenue budget. So total revenue, we budgeted eight point seven four four million. That portion of that revenue, the largest portion is the water rate revenue. And so here's the breakdown of, of where we're at. Our fixed service charge is five, we're going to, we're budgeting at five point, four point five six million dollars. Of that, we've broken down to three different sections, and everybody has seen this on their bill, as a service charge, a debt surcharge, and a reserve surcharge. So the service charge is the two point nine million dollars. The debt surcharge, which goes directly to paying debt, is the one point, or one million dollars, and the reserving surcharge of seven hundred thousand dollars.
And, and if we don't, if they don't use water up to what we're hoping, then that.
Comes out of the reserve.
Will come out of that seven hundred.
Correct. That's where that, that buffer will buffer this number here. So our quantity charge, we're budgeting at three million dollars. So you can see that we're getting closer to the fifty-fifty split between the service charge and the quantity charge, which exposes us to more risk, more risk of losing revenue based on, on low usage. Or the flip, flip side is, if people do use more than we budget, then we'll actually get more revenue than we, than we get. So, so there is a little bit more, you're going to see a more fluctuation in revenue coming forward than we had in the past. Before, we were seventy-five, twenty-five fix versus variable or, or quantity charge, which kind of left us a little more steady, even though throughout this drought, we did feel the effects, so that tells you how big that effect was of that drought, even on a twenty-five percent of what our revenue was. Operational expense. This is just the operation, not the pipeline, but again, the pipeline doesn't, doesn't vary too much from, from this here. It's five point one million dollars. Salaries and benefits of three point three seven six. Material supply of seven hundred and seventy thousand dollars. Utilities a two eighty-four. Outside services, four hundred and seventeen thousand. Insurance of ninety-two and board of one eighty-five. Just a caveat, on that board, there is fifty thousand for a special election that we did budget for this year, not knowing if we're going to need to use that or not.
I saw, I saw seventy thousand in here, some more for that.
I, I put seventy for election because twenty for this current one. General election, we know that one's going to be spent, and then fifty for the special if need be. So I didn't break it out, but there's seventy thousand for election expenses in there.
No, I had a fellow quote me today that it was seventy thousand for the recall election.
No, it's.
Oh, seventy for the, you were saying for the recall election.
It's for total election, yeah.
Yeah, fifty, I, we've heard fif, up to fifty for the special election. Obviously, you can see salaries and benefits is our largest expense. We are, we, we deliver water, but we also deliver a service to, to that, to our water consumers, so that's, that's our largest operating expense. This is just kind of a chart that shows our salaries versus our social security increase that sometimes, just because you see an increase in our, in our sal, total salaries expenses, doesn't mean that just, that everybody's getting wage increases or there's just a large, you know, explosion of wages through the district. We actually, on average, are right on with the social security increase. So if you take this line and, and you average it out, it's exactly almost to the T, the social security increase. This big jump here was retiree, retire, retirees. So we had three retirees in that year that we had large payouts of vacation and sick for that, for that year. So that's why you kind of see, so not al, not always does it tell the story that just because your salary and benefits total expense increases, doesn't mean that we're just giving increases to everybody.
Thank you for that explanation.
So here's our pipeline expense. So we, we budget, well, we, we show in our budget, this is kind of a confusing thing. We show in our budget that we're going to spend eight hundred and forty-five thousand in pipeline expenses, but we only budget seven hundred and forty-four because we don't budget, we don't, our, our budget's cash-based, and we always put in our pipeline budget equipment and cost. So what we feel like the equipment cost is, so it's kind of like true cost versus actual cost. So you can kind of see here that our labor and benefits for that, for pipeline this year, we're, we're budgeting three hundred and fifty thousand. Outside services of forty thousand, rental equipment and stuff like that. Materials, two hundred and forty thousand, and then management overhead of four hundred, or forty-five thousand. So here's our total debt currently. Again, here's that Davis Gransky loan, that's going to be, that's the last year of that. That's paid through the property taxes, so that we get money in and we just pay it, pay it back, back out. So that's, that one has a zero net effect on the district's budget. The two thousand nine COPs, these are for the meter project, so that five million dollar meter project, that's the, the debt service on that. The I-Bank, that is for the Magalia bypass, and that was a current, that was an original two million dollar budget, or two million dollar loan, and then private placement debt. That was for the SCADA system, Billy Road project, and for the, the new corporation yard. That one actually, I didn't budget the decrease in debt service because I wanted to make sure it went through, but as of today at noon, we actually did refinance that debt. So that actually will be down about twenty-one thousand dollars going forward for, for the district.
This is the one from the last meeting?
Yeah. So that one, that one is, that one is officially refinanced.
How much, because of the bypass, how much are we saving annually on utilities?
So based on our estimate, that we're saving the exact, almost the exact payment. So it's a net effect of a zero on that, based on saving utility because we're not having to pump water out of Magalia to bring it into the treatment plant.
So are we, in effect, bypassing Magalia reservoir then?
Correct.
Whenever we need to.
Well, most of the time, we do.
Sometimes we draw. Okay, so my question is, if we're pulling from Paradise and we're bypassing Magalia, and Magalia is sitting basically cycling up in conductivity and concentration of solids, do we look at the quality of that water and how does it deteriorate from the quality of the, of the Paradise Lake that we're drawing from and constantly making up?
Yeah, so I, and I'm just, I, I believe this is the way it happens, but yes, we do look at the quality of the water, and normally during low or during summer months, we're, so what, what it is, is the bypass is in between Paradise Lake and Magalia, and it's an intake that they put.
Treatment plant.
Oh, but it's in between Magalia and, right. And it's an intake that they put in that they could take water directly from there, and it runs gravity-fed all the way to the treatment plant.
Yeah, I understand that.
And that water has really good, like, quality. It's very good quality.
Low turbidity, it's, comes out of.
And so every once in a while, they'll have to, they'll have to turn the pump on and pump out of Magalia, and normally, the solids, not, it's not harmful to anybody, but there is a taste and odor issue that comes out of there.
So the, so the, so the Magalia water, by bypassing the Magalia reservoir, we may be creating a downstream, down-the-road problem that we need to look at and start addressing because if we don't use that water and it sits there and grows suspended solids and evaporates and increases in conductivity, then that becomes more of a treatment issue if and when we do have to use it.
We do, they constantly, yeah, they constantly.
We use it during the year, yeah. It doesn't sit there forever. There's a big difference between the quality of the.
Yeah.
Yeah, there is a difference. Yeah, and I, I don't know.
It comes from the same place.
Yeah, and I don't know, I don't know how they handle those issues. I know that there, they are, they are, there is movement in that water because they're having to release a half-CFS out of there constantly, so they're having to, there is movement within that, so it's not dead.
And we do put water in there at some times, we.
But it does have, it does have, it's less quality of water than they're pulling from that bypass.
So when we have to release, we use that water and not the good stuff from Paradise Lake?
Correct.
Okay, good.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, we're releasing out of there.
Okay.
And the difference in taste is pulling from the shallow pool as opposed to pulling from deep water.
That's probably not an appropriate issue now, but I'd like to address that later on, to get a little bit more knowledge on that.
So here's our capital outlay that we're, that we're projecting. So total capital outlay of sixteen point four million dollars. Of that sixteen point four million, five point five million of it.
Fifteen point five.
Fifteen point five, sorry. I don't know why.
Discounting that.
Yeah, geez. Fifteen point five million of that is, is for the process water recycle project. The water rights permit, there's, that's the remaining portion that we have on our contract.[1762.12] That's been carrying over from year to year to year to year, so i- until, until the state gets back to the water rights engineer, we're not gonna pay anything because they're not doing any work. Uh, B reservoir design of $500,000. That's budgeted, that is monies that we actually went out to the, again, this is an S of, SRF project. So, the State Revolving Fund has, um, green, not green-lighted, but said that this project would qualify for State Revolving Fund loan money. Um, they offered us $500,000 to do a, a design to redo the, the B reservoir. That would, again, be at low interest, at a low interest loan to do that. Um, just a, a heads up to everybody, the B reservoir is where all of the treated water goes before it goes basically out to the district. And it's a large reservoir that is kinda like
Underground.
that they put into a bladder and fill up that bladder, but it's open. It's an open reservoir. It doesn't have any tops or, or anything.
It has a top.
It has a top.
It has, it doesn't have a top to the water bed. Um, there's no sheets on it. Um, but, uh, this would be for designing a concrete tank that would be a structure that would go and would be secure and it would be, um, less open to tinkering with.
That's the one that's up by the mobile home?
Correct, yeah, correct. Uh, just, just a thing is, if something was ever to go wrong with that reservoir, then everything would go wrong with Paradise Irrigation District because that's where all the water goes. And right now, there is no bypass to that.
Uh, uh, since I've been on the board, we replaced the bladder in the, I think in the second year I was here.
Yeah.
And I understood it lasts long, I've been here 10 years and I was told it was 10 years or 20-year fix and I understand there's nothing wrong with the thing right now. It's working fine. And this proposal has been around for about five years to build this big concrete reservoir to take its place. And I'm going, something's working and doing fine? Why are we looking into putting all this money out? We're all in debt up to our necks and we're going after
Well, I think that's been explained to us at like four or five or six or seven meetings since I've been on the board, that they've explained why we want to. But, but we're not talking about the B reservoir right now. He's just telling you, this is a
Design.
this is a design that's in our budget. It is not a
Just to let you know, this is not
This is not, we're going forward.
Well, and it's not money spent either, so.
Yes.
This is, this would be a decision for you guys into the future. If you don't, if you guys decide that, hey, this is working fine, we don't wanna touch it, that's your guys' decision. But I, but if you did want to, I wanted to make sure it was budgeted so that you guys saw it. Yep.
Page 43, it's got major goals fiscal year 2016, 17. And it talks about Myosine Canal, which we know from initial work is over 5 million. Cal Water and Chico, well, we can do that from the sewage line going down there and coming back, that's 20 million. And, uh, water right permit renewals, which we don't know. But there's no return on investment on the Myosine Canal, the information we have on it. Uh, there's no return on investment from Cal Water and Chico. I think either one of these things are just a waste, let me finish, I don't interrupt you, Seth. I think this is just a waste of effort by the district and potentially a bunch of heavy debt that doesn't return anything to us. That's my opinion.
Where, where's the he- where's the debt?
No, that, none of these projects, uh, th- those projects have not been budgeted.
There's no debt on this.
Yeah, there, there's nothing, nothing budgeted.
You're lining up a long-range plan for what the debt is.
They are, there are long-range plans and they are
Might not be the only ones using water in Paradise. Someday, our children might want water, so
They're, they're plans
These are things that will have to happen in the future, probably to sustain the district.
I don't think so.
And there are plans that will be brought forward when, when, when the time is necessary.
But
Um, the boat dock and land purchase, that we've already kinda discussed and we've already made a decision on that one, so. Um, and then minor capital projects. So I wanna point out, there is not a lot of minor pro- projects. There was a lot of requests for projects and a lot of requests for equipment and, um, as management, we went through and basically said no. Um, we, we, we stripped out anything that we felt was unnecessary at this point in time to get through these next couple of years. The only one that's on there is the upgrade of the outhouses at Paradise Lake, that's been on there a couple of years. And the only reason why it was on there this year is because the board proved it. So I can't, I can't take away your guys' wants, but I can take away other people's wants. Um, so that's the only reason why, if, if you guys don't feel it's the year to do it, it'll just be on there next year. If you guys ever say, "Screw it, it's, it's done," then it'll be off. So, that's, that's the only reason why that one even, is even on there.
Do the outhouses work now?
They work great.
Maybe, Bill, we should just not, not in, not change them out since they're working.
So we did, we did pour a pad up there and we put the outhouses on there, but I know this one was to put a full structure over the top. So, and that has not happened. Yeah, yeah. And then this is the other thing, this doesn't have anything to do with the budget, but it does have something to do with the budget because we're finally getting to the point where we're gonna be reserving. So, I just wanted to kind of, uh, throw the reserving policy out there that will be part of the budget next year because as we go forward and we're actually gaining revenue forward, then we're gonna be reserving that revenue. And that revenue reserving is a part of a board decision also. How do you wanna save this? Where do you wanna put it? What's the most priority for you to have money left over? For what purpose? Um, so, so there's two types of reserves. There's designated reserves and there's restricted reserves. Restricted reserves are reserves that the board can't touch. It's there, it's by legal, it's, it's legally set that it must be spent on specific items. I guess you can touch it, but it better be spent on the, the item that you're supposed to be doing it. Um, and then there's
This was like the elusive $10 million that we just blew through.
Correct. That was restricted reserves and it was, it was part of, it was actually
Restricted reserves.
It was, it's bond proceeds. So if you borrow money for a specific project, those goes into restricted reserves because those monies need to be spent for the project that you borrow it for. Designated reserves are, are reserves that the board has opportunity to make decisions over. Um, and so what we're gonna bring forward, and this will be part of a finance committee, but it's, it's a policy. It's a policy of how you save those reserves based on, uh, the board's decision. So there's an operating reserve, means that you have, you've put money in there so that during the ebbs and flows of the year, you have monies sitting there that you can use when, when times are bad and you fill back up when times are good. Rate stabilization fund, that again is, is so that when we have this drop in revenue, we don't have to go immediately back to the public and go, "We need money now, we need money now," and we're gonna have this spike in, in your rates. This kind of smoothes out those spikes, so you kind of, you use that revenue up to kinda smooth the, the rate increase over a couple of years. Emergency reserve fund, I think that's pretty, um, self-explanatory. If we had an emergency, we gotta dip in to get things going up here, that we have that money available. Long-term capital reserve, that's a pay-as-you-go type of thing. Hey, we need to replace a tank in 10 years. All right, let's start putting money away today for that tank so that when we, when that tank's ready to be maint- or ta- taken care of, we have the money sitting there in this long-term reserve. Capital replacement reserve or equipment replacement reserve. Hey, trucks, every year, we're gonna buy a new truck. And, but we're gonna reserve for that every year so that we have money that's available to buy it, so our fleet never gets to the point where we're having breakdowns. And then a drought management reserve, again, I think that's pretty self-explanatory. If we have a drought, this would actually absorb that drought and then you don't have to go out to the public for a rate increase, you just absorb the drought through your normal reserves and then you just keep going.
That's, that's our current 700,000 that we
That, no, that's just a reserve. The 700,000 is just a reserve. You then take as a board and go, "Where do we wanna put that 700,000?" "I'll put 100,000 here, 200 here, 300 here." And then you slowly build these reserves up, where you go, "We're gonna slop it here all at once, and when that one's filled up, then we go to the second one, and we go to the third one, and we go to the fourth one." That'll be coming to the board here shortly as we get through finance, the finance committee, um, and then we'll, we'll make sure that comes to you. And that's the end of my slideshow.
Thank you, Kevin.
Yes.
Kevin?
Welcome.
Page 62, you have major goals fiscal year 2016 and 17.
Yep.
The last one down is continue the Prop 218 process on a yearly basis?
Correct. That, that, that's one of George's goals, actually. He wants to look at the rates every year and bring it to the board and say, "Here's where we're at. Do you guys wanna do a Prop 218? Do you guys wanna go back out to the public? Yes or no?" Let it, the board says, "Yay, okay, we're gonna go," or "No, no, we're not." But the reason why he's doing this is so that we're ne- we're not gonna get into this position that, that we're, now, we're, we're doing this Prop 218 and it's been three, stretching out three years, and now we gotta come to the board and go, "We gotta do it. We don't have a choice." Now we're gonna continuously look at it every year so that the board's fresh on it, they understand where we sit and what kind of deficit or increases that we're, or, or if we're just gangbusters on revenue, where, where we're sitting on that too. So that's, that's, that's the goal with that.
We do a good job on our budget. I mean, we've already increased the fees to cover our expenses. So if we do a good job on keeping those expenses in line, then we shouldn't have to go back to them and say, "Give us more money."
As of, as of the current projections, but as, you know, as everybody knows, projections don't always work out to where you want them to be.
Well, something unforeseen comes up and we're concerned about that and present that part.
We're normally, we're normally right on when, with most of the operational stuff. You know, not, there's not a lot of things that really kinda kick us in, in the teeth on that. It's the capital projects and it's the, the revenue. Those are the two that really kick us in the teeth, so.
Um, page 63.
Yep.
Board at the bottom.
Yeah.
And you have a board stipend at $12,000 a year starting this fiscal year, or an estimate. I guess it's not in the budget, but it's an estimate. Can you explain what the bor- the board stipend is?
Sure. So the, before your guys' wage or your, your $100 a meeting was in just the operations. And so it was the recommendation of the committee to break out the board expenses to really show all of the board expenses so that they weren't just in the operations. So, before, you guys were in just our administration salaries and benefits. So this year, what we did is we broke them out, so that's 12,000 for your $100 a meeting for the whole board. It's, um, and then the board-related expenses is the same as employee-related expenses, that's your guys' health insurance.
That's for health insurance?
Health insurance for the board. And then the 15,000, you guys voted, uh, that take 15,000, so each guy, was it 3,000? 3,000 for, for each one, that you guys have a budget to do, uh, education expenses, uh, travel and that type of stuff. That comes out of that 15. And then you see the 70,000, 20,000 of that is for the current, uh, election and 50 is budgeted for a special election.
Yeah, that's where I saw the 70,000, I was wondering what you're doing.
20, 20, 20 we know we're gonna spend, 50 we don't know yet. And we don't know if it's gonna be 50, who knows?
Thank you.
Bill, is that all, you've been kinda running, do you
All right, let me turn some more pages here, I may have another
Why don't we just go ahead and we'll finish up with you, then we'll move on to the next director.
I can bring this up too, for whatever questions you guys have, kind of, get to the page.
Actually, I've skipped over some questions I had. They got answered in a roundabout way. I was interested in the payment of wages for the lake because it had quite a bit of variation. I don't even know what page to look on.
Yeah, I, that one, that one is, that's how they code their time, 'cause they have two, they have two departments. Um, so just to kinda let everybody know, we have six departments in, in operations. Uh, 35, go to 35.
Yeah, I was gonna say, it's stretched right around there.
We have six departments inside of operation. We have sources supply, security and recreation, water treatment, transmission distribution, customer service and administration.
It's on page 49, that's what I was looking at.
49? Well, this, this summarizes it, so.
Security and recreation.
And so, si- sources supply and security and recreation are kind of one in the same in a way. So it's based, it's based on how the, the lake people up there, uh, code their time. So, that's why you might see some variation in, in their, in their salaries. Again, the other thing too is if, if we're doing a project up there and we have people from the, from the yard going up there to do a project, then their, their time gets coded to there. So you might see some spikes every once in a while, based on if people are up there working or not.
This is just a spreadsheet of a budget, different years actual, comparing it. Like the 15, 16 budget, which we've, it was actually 92,000 instead of 113,000. It went down quite a bit, and then it's budgeted for the next two years is 90,000, 92,000.
Yeah, it's just bas-
I'm figuring how you got that.
It's just based on how people are, are, how they're coding their time truly, to be actual versus budget.
Why do you have two 2016, 17 estimates?
Where's that at?
The last two columns on 49.
It's 'cause the other one is 17, 18.
Yeah.
Oh, it should be 17, 18.
It's the two-year budget.
Ah, you got one, darn it.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
That's just the way to form.
Okay, good. I thought, I
Yeah.
Okay, so it was, see, when he said there was two years, I didn't see the two years, now I see it.
I just assumed they were two years. I didn't see the mistake.
Right.
Well, you see it at the beginning, like on page 34, you see 17, 18.
Yeah.
Yeah. 35, but then when you get back to the 49
I'll change that before it's finalized.
I could tell by the blue column, well, that's what he was referring to.
2016, 17 today.
Yeah, but I know.
Not approving 18.
But that needs to be changed.
We're not approving 18, we're just looking at
We're just approving one-year budget then?
Yeah, it's just a one-year, one-year budget with the comparison of the second.
Little more
Little more info.
Yeah.
Okay, well, that's fine with me.
A little more long-term projection.
And just
On the agenda, it's only 16, 17.
And just to let you know, the, the approval of the budget is just, it's a, it's a formality. The, the expenses inside here still need to be approved by the board every single time that something is spent under, under the authority of, of George, or above the authority of George. So, and other things, the largest expense is salaries and benefits, and that's approved by the board through contracts. So you guys have a contract in place with IBW that is gonna expire in, I believe, two years. And you have a contract with management that expires in three years. And that really sets forth the salaries and benefits associated with, with this budget. I guess the one thing that you're approving is that we are keeping vacant positions open and that you're going to be, we'll be bringing them on three months into this bu- or three months before the budget closes. So that, that is included in this budget, um, for that portion. I do wanna point out that there is some new things that, uh, that are new to this budget that I put in this year. And this is one, the long-range, uh, or the, the labor ranges. So this is ranges that have been approved through the agreements for every position open in the district. Some of these aren't even filled. Um, I don't even know, senior equipment operator I know is not fill- filled, or, or some of the systems operator, those aren't even filled, but I just wanted to kinda show all of the positions and the ranges that were, have been approved
Well, Donna, didn't you, didn't you ask about this at the last meeting? You were asking, didn't you ask about where the rates, wasn't it you, or was it the other lady that was up there that asked about where the rates are? Where's the wage range and so forth, and they gave, okay, it might have been the other lady that was asking about it. Someone asked us about it.
Right.
So, where it is on the website, this is
And this, this here is a, is a new one too. And this, this basically takes all of our budgeted salaries and benefits and breaks it down by position. So every position that's filled within the district has their salaries, their overtime that we're budgeting, that is varies. Um, the retirement, health benefits, and the, uh, employee, or the, the taxes, uh, and workers' comp associated with each one of those.
I thought I was getting 100,000 a year.
Not, not on this budget.
We, we've had to cut back.
We've had to cut back.
We've had to cut back. But in this is where you see this right here, from this point down here is that three months of those open positions that we'll be, uh, filling in this budget. So that's a new, that's a new, uh, page. And then I also did it for the going forward, uh, for the next budget year also. So those, those are new. Um, I thought I put one more thing in there.
How did you figure?
Why is Division 1 look different?
Who's Division 1?
Me.
'Cause he's single. He was single when he did it.
Okay.
This right here
I was more frugal.
He was single at the
This right here is what we looked at when, uh, people came forward with their, uh, capital request. And so what we did was we did a, a priority, we prioritized each one of the capital. Um, you can see that there's two little, small little ones down here. Uh, those are just gonna, we, we just included those in Those are just gonna, we, we just included those in operations, but we wanted to show them that they were requested and that they were approved in this, in, in this spreadsheet here. But you can see all the ones that we basically put over to priority two, and that we, we were not going to be, as a staff recommendation, we're not going to be funding priority two capital recommendations this current budget year. Unless the board wants to do it.
Unless the board wants to take the, the UV gators, those are the ones that escaped from Louisiana during the flood?
I've got a lot of questions, I want to answer them.
Current rates, here's our, all of our current rates that I created and the going-forward rates for each one of the rate increases that will be put in place. So you can see that our current rates are, are in the first column. As of one-one-seventeen, there's our rates where they will go. Up above that, you can see the quantity charges and where they will go. So part of this budget year is, six months of this rate is included in that. And then in two thousand and eighteen, where the rate will be headed to.
Yeah.
And then I put this in this cash projection, just so that you can, the board could see where, where our cash was at and where, what we're estimating. You can see that our PFD funds is a five hundred thousand dollars, actual, and then it goes down. That's because I'm budgeting that we're gonna spend some of that on pipeline projects. And then it goes down again, again, I'm trying to really kind of push these pipeline project things to bring down some of this cash that they'll be going. But it kind of shows where designated cash will be and PF, and the restricted cash is. And then that gives the, the board an idea that, okay, there's a million here that they have no, they can't do anything with. It'll be the two-point-nine-five that, that'll be considered in designated funds, and that's gonna how reserving policy will come into effect.
I do have one more question. Where did the, the meter, isn't there a fund for replacing the?
Yeah, that was in there, I saw that.
Was it in there somewhere?
Fireflies?
Fireflies.
Yeah, I saw it somewhere.
That's through operations, so we just, we just replace those through operations, the operational budget. There is restricted reserves that are for the last payment of the meter project. That's five hundred and seventy-one thousand sitting there. But, but right now, what we're doing is, as, as meters, as the fireflies go out, we're just paying for them through, through our operations.
And when you budgeted for that, did you budget it like a hundred a month?
That's what we budgeted, yeah.
Okay.
A hundred a month is what you're budgeting?
That's what we're looking at, we hope they slow down.
The, the PFD funds, you don't show the money coming in?
I do show the money going in on the, on the budget, but I'm just showing more money going out.
More money going out, okay. Providing the fire department gets on the stick.
Yeah, exactly.
Right.
Bill, anymore? I want to go through, go through each director.
Don't give me any time, I'll pick up another one.
All right. Well. Director Jacobson?
Yes. Yeah, just a couple of comments here. I, I'm sure a lot of these we can go into more detail on at a better time. Some of these you guys are probably aware of, I'm, you know, on the board, so I'm not. Like the hydroelectric evaluation pump storage.
Give us the page number.
Page eighteen. So it's thought here, this idea was brought forward as a way to finance the construction of a new Magalia Dam, potential to generate peak hydropower by using storage in Paradise Lake and a new Magalia Dam. Power would be generated during peak hours by moving water from Paradise Lake down to Magalia Dam, then pumping it back up during off-peak time. Actually, if, if that were profitable, that'd be a great idea, because you could, in that way, move Magalia reservoir like we were talking about, and you wouldn't be sitting there with a dead body of water.
Correct.
So we could recirculate it back up and then have it pay for itself coming back down. So I like that idea, that's good. The process recycle, there were some costs in here for, let me grab a page here real quick. And again, I want to get into big detail on it, but there are some comments here on major goals for two thousand and sixteen, two thousand and seventeen.
Page?
Page fifty-two.
It's two.
And it says, make contractual arrangements for outside construction management services for the process water recycle project to oversee the contractor. So I guess what I'm, what I'm asking is, do we, are we gonna hire a contractor we can't trust? Or, I mean, that kind of doesn't make a whole lot of sense to me.
And that, I'm just gonna speak from what I know, I, I, I'm not an expert in this situation at all, but I do know that there is, that you, a project of this size, what you, I, I believe what they're talking about is that you do hire an outside engineering firm to look over the project through its completion. So as they get to steps, as they're doing certain things, that you have the independent engineer out there making sure that they're doing it to spec.
I previously asked the same thing.
Yes, we have.
I mean, you know, months and months ago, or last year or something like that, because it piqued my curiosity also. But, and George can explain it better than I, but at the time, he explained it to my satisfaction. And he said that it really does, it warrants the expense. I said, well, don't, can't you and Jim Passanisi or, or somebody else manage this? And the, the nature of the project and the scope, he said, was, would take them out of their work and that it's money savings if we do that.
Sure, I get that, but it seems to me like, if we're paying a company to do the pilot studies, which we did, and to design and recommend the system, there should be some sort of guarantee. And, and if that company that we've paid that money to to design that system, it should be their responsibility to make sure that the contractor builds as designed. And we shouldn't have to pay additionally to have somebody come in and police them and make sure they do what they were paying for.
Well, if they hadn't, if the original company hadn't, hadn't bid it that manner, you know, if they had bid it and said, okay, and we'll be your policeman to make sure that they build it to spec, then we would, we're either gonna pay for it upfront or with an outside one. And I, I believe it was just not asked for in the bidding upfront.
Okay, so we just did our due diligence.
But I'm, I'm speaking about something I'm not sure about, we can ask George.
Because we don't know what we're going to be, we would not be able to say, well, we, we need you to do this job. We have no idea what you're actually going to be doing just yet. So we really- We wasn't doing our due diligence, we actually did our due diligence then, we just couldn't-
Okay, well, so, yeah, so I don't want to get lost on that, but, but it was just, that sort of got my interest. And then also, I want to make sure that when we do get to that process, that we, that we do review all of those options as far as, because there's some comments here on the same page. Continue evaluation of turbidity removal options of the lake raw water with chemical addition needed to optimize and enhance flock coagulation during storm events. Well, I thought we already had that nailed down, and nobody wanted to change anything, because it was not broke, don't try to fix it. So, but, but here I see that we are gonna go back out and take another look at the most feasible and cost-effective way of approaching that, which, which we should.
I think we do it.
Well, this is during storm events.
Yeah, I think we do it every year.
Well, this is during, this is under the water treatment plant.
Yeah, but this is during storm events is the way, that's where we have our problem. We run into problems when we have a large storm event, it changes the turbidity of our water.
Yeah, but it says, this also includes optimizing the treatment of high turbidity Magalia reservoir raw water in the summer.
Because that one gets kind of a musty smell to it.
Right, and that's the one I'm thinking that we're gonna recycle with the code gen, and we'll alleviate that problem and save some money. So, okay, wait a minute, you had your terms, my turn now.
Well, this, I just wanted to correct Ken, he said bids, and it was a sole bid thing that went out to one engineering firm, nobody else bid on it.
No, it wasn't a sole bid, three bid, there were three bids here.
Not on the engineering, billion, twenty thousand, it was one bid, sole bid.
Okay, Bill.
Here we go.
We're gonna stay on topic, but that's not the way it happened.
Well, okay. The inner tight with Cal Water Chico, I have to disagree with you a little bit on that one. I think that there's an, that's page nineteen, there's an opportunity there for us to bank water that if we didn't use it, might go over the dam and end up in the Sacramento River and the Delta and Southern California eventually. If instead, we send it down a pipeline that's funded hopefully mostly by Cal Water, because they need the water, and we don't, then we can bank it. And if we don't need it, we can make them pay for it, which is revenue. And if we do need it, we can make them pump it back up the hill and give it to us in our times of need. So I think that's a good option personally. And we can get more into that in detail when we get to that, but, but I, I think that's a-
It's a much more expensive, but it actually does have that return on investment Bill's always looking for, that we would not get with the Myosine.
Okay, and let's see, I think. Okay, we addressed that one earlier, no question there. We just got that one, run through my tabs here.
Yeah, you guys have already gotten most of mine, so.
On the, on the major goals for fiscal year twenty-six, twenty-seventeen, on page fifty-five, fill three permanent utility worker positions in two thousand and seventeen. Your cost projections for salaries, did it include these three positions that you intend on filling?
It did, it, it only included three months though, because we're, we're only, we're only gonna fill those in.
June, July, August?
No, what was, what's three months back, May?
May, June, July?
So, so then April, May, June?
April, May, June?
There it is.
April, May, June.
April, May and June.
Okay.
Because we want to bring them on before that, because we want to bring them on at least a little before construction season, get them trained, and then they'll be ready to go for construction.
Well, maybe we should stipulate that somehow in the major goals, because it kind of looks like we're gonna bring those three in, and then we're gonna have two years worth of salary.
I can, I can, I can put a little thing that says three months, or as of April or something like that.
You did tell us three months, but, yeah.
Well, it doesn't say in the financial statement.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay. Under customer service, page fifty-nine. We've got some lofty goals there, but I think we missed one. And I sort of just scribbled in something here. Create and improve plan to communicate our operations to our customers, so they understand how we're serving them and how we keep up with maintenance, required upgrades, water quality, being proactive, that, that they're all being proactively dealt with. But I think under major goals, under customer service, we need to make an effort to, to reach out and communicate better with our customers and let them know what we're doing and why we're doing it.
Sure.
And I have one more tab.
We do have a pretty healthy budget with Cedar Creek right now, who is our, through our-
But I think, I think it's a goal.
It is a goal, yeah, it is a goal though. But we do already-
And this was fiscal year two thousand and sixteen, twenty-seventeen, it says, budget for new ca- Page seventy-four, budget for new capital equipment is zero.
Correct.
However, I read somewhere, we were looking to buy some new forklifts and man lifts for the water treatment plant, and I'm sure that's a capital expense which would equal greater than zero, so I'm confused there.
I don't know where you saw that.
Well, you budgeted a new truck.
They maybe put it in their, their goals, but they, that, that goal won't be met.
What was that, page seven or ten or something like that?
There were goals I read, and that's why I flagged it.
We're not, we're not approving any of that, they might ask for it.
Page ten.
So, so maybe we shouldn't put meaningless goals.
Well, that's, that's their goal, right.
It, it's not that, Cliff, what it is, is that this is what has been asked for by the, by the workers, by the, by management, by the supervisors and managers. They go through with their cut, and they say, well, we're gonna prioritize these things. We think these are priority one, priority two, out of the total request. And so Kevin has budgeted for the priority one items, and if the board so chooses, we could say, no. Don't budget that five hundred thousand dollars for B reservoir design, take it out. Move it over back to a priority two, and let's move up, and let's get that pickup truck, and let's get the forklift, and move those from priority two to priority one, change your budget, make it happen. It was really just a, a, a working tool that we put in for the first time this year.
Got it.
So that board members could see what the requests were, how much it was gonna cost in the priority.
From each of the different departments.
Okay, thank you.
And the thing is, is just because it's not budgeted, doesn't mean the board can approve it too, throughout the year. If they come to you and go, we really need this forklift, and it, just because it's not budgeted, doesn't mean you guys can't go and approve it.
Okay, well, that's all the questions I have, thank you.
Director Duncan?
I've been on, working on this for over six months, so I have no questions except the, the thing about the year.
You've caught most of mine, so, see what Director Hunt comes up with and see if I'm left with anything.
No, I, I didn't, I'm, I'm very happy with the way you continue to evolve with the budget. Once I get you into budgeting on a monthly basis, then I can rest.
That's, that's what I'm working on.
The one, the one, the reserve on the drought, when I was the one who set that up many years, several years ago, and I always liked to call it the not a rainy day reserve.
Not a rainy day, exactly.
It actually should be called drought or a flood, drought or flood, because if you have heavy rains throughout the summer-
We're not selling water.
Yeah, you're not selling water, so like, you're again in the same position as a, as a drought.
So it could be not a rainy or too much rain.
Too much rain, exactly.
So at this time, all the directors were satisfied with the questions we have? Glad to go to the public right at this point, and if you have some questions for Kevin, if you want to step up there, and we'll get these questions answered. Glad to get some in foot.
Good evening, gentlemen.
There you go.
The question I had revolves around the bu, the, the budget portion of payroll. I noticed on the sheet that it shows that it's gonna be increasing in two thousand and sixteen, two thousand and seventeen, and, and the next year, you know, it's like, and we just, we just went through a rate increase, or actually, what we call the stalemate, we didn't do a rate increase for the manager and Kevin Phillips, yet it appears that there's been one, that it's been budgeted, and then it's budgeted for next year also. And as you well know, that's one of the critical issues that the public has been making, is that PID employees, not the lower-level guys, not the ones that we're holding out for the three-month term, and, you know, we're talking about the upper-level management. That there's, you know, there's this continual increase being given to them. And I think the public is gonna continue to ask this board to address that. Even if a rate increase has been awarded to you, they do not want it spent on increasing wages. Thank you.
I'll answer the question.
Do you want to? You can, you can get it, you can get an answer, Lorraine, if you want, this is, this is one of those times where we're gonna-
The contract, so I budgeted, I, I budgeted three percent salary increase. And then I budgeted the twelve percent, six months of the twelve percent medical increase. The contracts that were approved-
The medical increase isn't something we're giving, that's an increase by the insurance company.
Right, the contracts that were approved were approved with a wage increase equal to social security. So whatever social security comes out, that'll be what the employees get across the board. Every employee is tied to social security at this point.
Except directors.
Yeah, you guys are, I broke you guys out.
Yeah, I know.
So that's where the wage increase comes from.
So social security is zero?
So I don't know whether it'll be, if it's zero, it'll be zero, if it's five, it'll be five. That's, that's what, that's what the board has approved.
Well, just an estimated budget.
And we did, we did a lot of negotiating with the union to get to that point. There was a lot of negotiating with the union to get to that point. That's not, that's not an easy, it, it might sound easy to just go in and tell them no, but that's not, you're dealing with the IBW, so it's not actually an easy thing to do.
The only, the, the issue that we're making is this is management. The management at the top level isn't under a union. And this is-
But they have the same contract.
They have the same contract.
Well, maybe we need to see those contracts, but you evidently are the ones that are making these contracts. And what I keep hearing you say is, we're, we're listening to you, and then we come out with a report that, you know, shows that you're not listening, because that's what people are looking at, that's one of the key things that we're looking at.
These are already agreed upon contracts. We're not going back to renegotiating with them this year or the next year, and then in one case, not even that year after that, this was done a couple of years ago. in one case, not even that year after that, this was done a couple of years ago. So we have to stick to our contract. We cannot change it. Just doesn't matter if everybody screams. These are the contracts that were agreed upon, and that was voted upon by all five board members said yes on that, excluding one that's sitting next to me now, the five board members that were on at that time.
How long ago was that contract made?
Last year? Early last year?
You know, what you don't understand is a labor contract for management, you can write them where they expire. We have not. Other company, other districts may. So these contracts, once they're put on, when George came in here, was that 2002 or '04? Okay, that's the origin of his contract. It never expires. So we cannot go in and say, "We're going to unilaterally change your contract." It's a contract. If we would make contracts differently in the future, we may say, "We're giving you a five-year contract or a three-year contract," and at the end of that time, that contract expires, and we're going to renegotiate. And we could develop contracts like that for future use. But right now, we have what the board did ten or 20 years ago.
And again, I'm speaking for the public, and I'm speaking for what I've heard. Regardless of the contract negotiations that you've done, I don't know how you, obviously I don't know how you do it, but I'm just saying that this is what the issue is with the people when they look at what the upper level is being paid. It is exorbitant for the size of this water agency and the community at large median income. It's just out of balance. And people that are having hard times are looking at that, and it's like the board, you know, I'm speaking a lot for the people, and I'm saying, you know, the board has to do something different, because it's, you can't keep just saying, "We're going to give this 2% or 3% increase." 2% or 3% on $150,000 is different than 2% on a $20,000 Social Security. I mean, there's a difference.
When you guys say $100,000, I heard all the numbers, you're talking about benefits, medical, we're not giving salary increases on those.
No, I'm not talking about the benefit package. I'm talking about the actual salary.
Well, when you guys were relating to wages that were total wages paid, there are not 33 employees that make over $100,000 here, not in base pay, including their benefits.
I think we used the term 25% of the...
I heard 33, I'm pretty sure was the number. I heard over 33 people.
Well, and I don't want to quibble with the amounts, because a lot of times, we don't have current information. Now, we're starting to get more current information. But the current information that I'm hearing right now is you're going to continue to raise wages based upon contracts that the board has made, and I'm saying that I think the public wants something different. Are you going to listen to us?
We are listening.
We are listening.
They're only going to get whatever Social Security gives. If Social Security gives nothing next year, they're going to get nothing.
Whether or not a, whether or not a good or bad decision was made in the past, all we can do is do our best to make the right decisions going forward. So if Kevin has created a budget based on a contractual arrangement with individuals, we can't go back to them and say, "Oh, we lied to you. We're going to take it back now." We have, we made a decision, whether good or bad, and as board members, we have to try and figure out how to make a better decision next time and not make the same mistakes again. So, I for one, hear you. My hands are tied. I can't go back and say any more than I could say to you, "I promised you this, and but now I'm going to take it away because everybody's upset." You're going to say, "Well, I don't care if they're upset. You promised me that, and I expect you to deliver." So going forward, we need to be smarter, and we need to not make mistakes if they are, and that's the best we can do.
Let's say if there were mistakes made.
That's what I'm saying, if there were. I mean, the best we can do is to learn from what we hear the public saying and try to make good informative decisions going forward, and that's what we're trying to do.
Tying the contract to the Social Security raise was quite a hurdle, and when we got it, we were very pleased with it. And like you said, this year, there is no, nobody got an increase because of it. If Social Security says zero next year, nobody's going to get that. He doesn't know what Social Security's going to do, so that's why he put 3% in there.
It's just budget.
But...
This is budget, not spent.
He doesn't want to, he doesn't say, "Well, Social Security's going to be zero next year, so we won't increase the budget."
And then he's wrong, and then he has to come back to us.
Okay, so then to make it clear for the public, it would be wise for the public to know what these contracts are. So, as a member of the community, then I will probably request these contracts so that we know what we're talking about. Thank you.
That would be good. But bear in mind, again, as the public, all five board members that were sitting on the board at that time, that's minus Director Jacobson, and with Director Fletcher on there, all agreed yes to that. That was not a board of three, like I know a lot of you are thinking. That was all five directors said yes to that budget, to those contracts. So, just want to make that very, very clear, and that's the way it's been the past few years, not just last year or the year before. It's pretty much past five years, six years. Yes, sir?
I have a question. I just need clarification now. Kevin, you said that management has a contract that expires in three years?
No. So, there's two bargaining groups. There's the union, the IBW group, and then there's a management bargaining group.
Mid-management?
Yes.
Okay, well, you didn't say mid-management.
I know. I was using, I said the acronym of management, because that's how we, that's how the board understood.
They forgot all of those things.
Sorry.
Mid-manag... No, that's a serious omission. Okay, so then that, that in my mind, okay, but then I want clarification. So then, when the board voted for the current upper management contracts, they were open-ended?
Well, there's no expiration date.
I mean, evidently, it just goes on for, how do you say it?
Perpetuity.
Sorry. But, I mean, wow, I'm just astounded at that. But usually, I will, I'm just astounded at that. But I appreciate it. What I would like to see personally is the pay, I understand the employees took a 5%, what they call it, they're calling it a furlough.
It is a furlough.
That was the office personnel.
I think...
The mid-management.
I think the bottom line is, we have very competent employees. I have been impressed with what I have seen around this water district. And if we lose competent employees who have the knowledge of our system here to green turnips, it will cost us so much more in the long run. And I would ask the board to do whatever we can to get the money back to those people, because you cannot buy experience, especially if you're dealing with people that are qualified, particularly like our grade-five operators. I was astounded that, what, we have four of them? Phew! For a little water district like...
Two grade-fives.
Like this? That's awesome.
Yeah.
But I mean...
Three grade-fives.
If they, if they go to some other, and believe me, there's other agencies that pay probably a lot more. I'm sure, I know there are, maybe not up in this, but I just think it's important that whatever we can do to keep, the number of things I've seen constructed in-house, the, it's just, it's just awesome, and I commend you on that. What I don't think we need to spend anything on is the outhouses. I think, I think PID's system that they have around the lake, again, is exemplary. I, it's just, it's just commendable. I just, but my feeling is, I'm just astounded at the open-ended contract for the upper management, and then I would like to see the retention of our experienced employees. I, you just cannot buy that experience, especially as you get other people looking to retire or they're enticed by a...
Local water district.
...trinket from somebody else. Let me ask you this. Okay, our SCADA system?
Yeah.
Is that under contract?
No. That's all, I mean, we've paid for the SCADA system, and we have, it's ours. We manage it, and we actually have people in-house that we've sent to training to make sure that they know how to program it.
Okay, electronic technicians, then? Good.
Yeah, one of our operators.
Yeah, one of our operators is incredible with it, so...
Right, and I think we all agree with you. As a business owner myself, I know that if you've got good employees, you do whatever you can to keep them. And sometimes that's difficult when people are saying they're making too much money, but to replace them and retrain them, and to end up with the additional expenses because of errors and sloppy work from inexperienced employees, it's bad management. It's always best, keep your good employees, keep them happy, keep them there, because we all want to have good quality water.
Kevin, what's the website? I see a lot of rolled eyes. I know that you all think that there's, or some of you think that there's, we pay our employees too much. But when you compare their wages to other water districts our size, or water districts around, what these guys make, what their positions make, you will find we are really not that upper end of the ladder. We are more towards the lower end of the ladder, so, because we do live in this community. Do they make more money than a guy bagging groceries at Safeway? Yeah, I'll agree with that. But do you go over and ask how much everybody at the hospital makes? Because I guarantee they make those, those over $100,000 a year salaries, too. There's a lot of over $100,000 a year salaries, if you add all the benefits and everything else up with it, around Paradise and around Butte County. But you have to look at it. Do you question our fire department? Guarantee you find a lot of over $100,000 salaries there, too, when you add all the benefits and everything else. So you have to look at the big picture, but you don't ever question whether or not you want the firemen to come to your house. But it seems like we question a lot whether or not you want to turn on the tap and have water, or have water for the firemen at your house.
I think it's the volume of the size of this agency and what it can afford. You've got the hospital, and you've got, you know, it's just, it's huge. You know, it's got backing from other people. If you're depending upon the people in this community to pay for everything, then it's going to be affordable. And, you know, salaries is one thing that is, you know, you're looking through that, and that's what you see.
Look at the cost of our water compared to other districts.
You're looking at school. I think that...
Just look at the cost of our water compared to other districts.
We just need to move on.
People have to look at that, and will probably do some research on that.
Thank you. Is there anybody else from the public that has... Yes, yeah.
This is about water usage. You guys had a meeting over at Town Hall a year or two ago, 2013, 2014. George was talking about conserving water, conserving, 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 and Dustin said you couldn't conserve too much, that the state could take away the water part that we can store...
Water rights.
If we're not using it. And I understood that 2013 was going to be the base year, and they talked about 2020 would be, again, we'd have to conserve 20% from the base year. Now, Kevin was talking about 2014 and comparing water usage to 2014, and I was just wondering how that...
Well, we have different years, we have different years for different things. So, in consumption, that I think what Kevin was referring to was our average consumption. He was referring back to 2014 and half of last year and half of, half of this year.
90% of 2014.
90% of 14, excuse me, half of last year, half of this year, yeah, okay, so, whichever it was, whatever he did.
Excuse me, 2014, we were compelled to use 20% less.
Right.
So, the reservoir is full, we should be able to use more than that 20%.
It's the state that always puts these restrictions on us. PID doesn't come up with the restrictions, the state does.
Yeah, I know that, but I thought that they said that you guys got it without that restriction for this year.
So, let me just answer your question. That number was just a budget number, a budgeting number. The conservation that would be pushed onto the residents is not that. It's not, we're not going to tell the residents, "You must stay within this range of water usage." I believe all that we've told our customers is just wise water use requirements at this point. So there is no restriction. What my budget number was going back to is, how quickly are people going to get back to using water normally, you know? And so, that was the only reason why I took that 2014, which you're right, has a 20% decrease in it, and then took 90% of that as my number, thinking that it will be higher than 2015, but I don't think that we're going to get all the way back to the 14 number.
Three of my neighbors in a less than quarter mile, eighth of a mile span have changed their yards to, you know, things that are drought tolerant, rock landscaping. There's no more lawns. There used to be a big lawn there. It's not a lawn anymore. It's, if they have any lawn, it's...
I drive around town, and there's a lot of places where there's just oak leaves on the ground now, no grass and no, no plants, you know? They just stopped using water.
The other half of the equation is, we don't want a tinderbox here at the same time. We want to keep things green.
What I'm afraid is, if a fire comes through...
Exactly.
It's going to burn a lot easier than...
Well, my dad was fireman for 35 years up here. That's the biggest thing I fear, you know? You've been here forever, you know, and that's, that, you fear that.
Yeah, we're just, we're just using that figure to estimate what the revenue will be. Doesn't have anything to do with any restrictions on the users.
Yes.
I have one question.
Sure.
Are you sure?
Replacing all our steel pipes, so we don't have that expense of zinc orthophosphate.
We shouldn't go back.
Well, steel pipes still have to be protected. They corrode. Iron pipes corrode, asbestos corrodes. A lot of people...
Ductile iron doesn't corrode.
Zinc, zinc orthophosphate actually reduces the amount of...
Calcium carbonate?
Asbestos, no, it reduces the amount of asbestos in asbestos, asbestos piping puts off less asbestos into the water because of the zinc. It also protects iron pipe. It also protects galvanized pipe. So it's not just the galvanized.
Yeah, usually it's used primarily for the steel pipe. Now, I know, I know for ductile steel, ductile iron pipe, that stuff is bionic. I mean, it'll last for centuries, you know? Unfortunately, I don't know how much of it's used anymore, but I would just, I would just, if we have steel mains that are aging, I would encourage replacing those. We don't want to have a sinkhole and say down, hypothetically, down the middle of Skyway.
We only have 60 miles worth, so...
Here's something else to consider, too. A lot of private residences have plumbing that would corrode without that zinc as well, and it's protecting that. Now, PID has no responsibility to replace that for you, but we're certainly helping it extend its life for you.
The longevity of it, yes, yeah, yeah. And I guess you could call that a public service.
It is.
Thank you, sir.
90% of our stuff is public service.
How many, how long has this valve been in, at the reservoir where we're having the cavitation problem?
I don't know the answer to that.
Is that, is that the original valve?
It's probably, probably the valve after it was raised, I would assume, but that's...
Wasn't that put in when the bypass was put in? I'm just speculating, but no, before then. Much older than the bypass.
I, that's a question I don't know. That'd be a...
You'd have to ask Jim.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you, sir. Was there anybody else in the public that wanted to speak to item 3, excuse me, 4A?
Hello?
Hello.
I have a couple of questions. This budget for the 1617, that's for the fiscal time period from July 1 to June 30, okay? The 47% rate increase that we just received, in the two large meetings that lasted till approximately 1 o'clock in the morning, the Paradise residents were told that the 47% rate increase was to keep PID from going into bankruptcy. When you have lean times, there are issues that need to be addressed. And the elimination now of the capacity fees and the fees up at the boat dock, or wherever the, you're looking at eliminating those fees, this is all very con... or wherever you're looking at eliminating those fees, this is all very concerning because most of the board that is seated here has been on this board for 10, 11, and 14 years. This is the board that put us in the predicament that we are in. And when the Paradise residents are told that the 47% rate increase is to keep you guys from filing bankruptcy and then we find out that there's still increases in salaries going on, but yet you're trying to eliminate capacity fees and the boat dock fees and everything else. So you're expecting the Paradise residents to pay all of this.
Where have we ever said we were going to eliminate the boat dock fees?
Because we're going to have to end this meeting on the.
We, just in the last meeting, both of these issues went to committee.
Boat dock fees?
No, that's, no, you're, no, that's.
Well, the fees up at Paradise Lake.
We're not changing anything with the fees at Paradise Lake.
We, we're not, it's not on the Lake Committee's agenda. We haven't, nobody's put it on the agenda. We just got, today I just got a preliminary agenda to the Lake Committee and there are no fees being talked about.
Okay, well, am I using the wrong term? What was, what two issues went to committee at the last meeting?
Capacity fees.
Capacity fees?
Capacity fees and which other fee?
That was the one, the other one, the other one.
Was policy.
Policy, procurement policy.
I'm sorry?
Procurement policy, how we purchase things.
Okay, I thought there was something up at the lake that you guys were looking at eliminating also. My point being that this fiscal budget is for July 1 to June 30. This is August 31. So why are we doing this two months after the fact? And if you're not doing your job properly, then why should anybody be receiving increases no matter what the contract says? It needs to be looked at because it's just willy-nilly, do as you please. But yet you're going to still be getting these increases. And from what I understand, Social Security has not gone up in quite some time.
2%.
That's why we tied it to Social Security because it was the least increase, it was the least increase that we could find out there.
But Social Security is not passing a budget two months after the fact. Social Security is not the one that got us in the predicament, the PID.
You know why it's two months late?
Let's just keep the comments in motion.
Everything.
The protest, excuse me, the protest did not eliminate you guys from doing your jobs.
And we're not getting raises either.
I do recall, I do recall that we did have this as an agenda item and we ran out of time and had to put it off for a special meeting because of the public involvement with the last meeting, I believe, that we were at. We were, that was an agenda item to address a month ago. And we couldn't get to it because we ran out of time because we had a lot of people that wanted to speak and it just wasn't possible to review it properly.
But my point being, the 47% rate increase was supposed to go to keep PID out of bankruptcy. Now, raises are still being.
You're kind of mixing two things together into one. It's really not, that's not what was said, but if that's the way that you heard it, then you probably need to come in here and they'll give you some clarification. We don't have time at this meeting to do all the clarification that apparently you need, but.
Well, that's, I was at both of the meetings and that's what was said.
There's apparently a little more clarification that you need, I guarantee it. Because you're mixing two things together. You're saying 47% increase is to keep us from going out of bankruptcy. It is to pay for the things that need to be paid for at this district, there's no two ways about that. But if you need clarification, then you need to come in and sit down with somebody from the district and they'll be more than happy to do it. We are not going to be able to clarify that for you at this meeting.
But I think one thing though, you are referring to the salary increases that you saw in this budget, correct?
Yes.
Okay, but what Kevin was explaining was that these aren't probably even going to happen. They are just what he has to forecast as worst possible scenario as an expense for PID in case there is an increase in Social Security and because of the contractual arrangements that we have with the employees that we do have to raise. But it doesn't look like, it's not because you see it there, they're not going to get that increase. They're not getting that money unless the contract says they get it, unless the Social Security actually does go up. Even though that's probably not going to happen, he has to put it in the budget because otherwise if we don't put these expected expenses in the budget, then if they do happen and we didn't budget for them, now we have to come back to you and say we need some more money.
Well, that's why you came to us for the 47% because you guys crittered away all the money that was there.
I don't know, but I mean, does that kind of answer your question?
Well, I mean, it's, you guys are trying to compare oranges and apples here. You know, if you're looking at a rate increase to keep you out of bankruptcy, there should be no salary increases anywhere in that timeline. And this is for this budget. And it's already two months into this new fiscal year. So why are there raises being given when they're not?
There are, no raises.
Okay, this is hypothetical, this could go through. So whether or not.
This is not a raise, this is not, we're not approving raises.
Spending the money.
We are approving contractual agreements. This is to fulfill contractual agreements, but.
We have time limits for each public member and we've exceeded that.
Exactly, so, yes.
And it's time to move on.
I want to, I would encourage you to please come down, set up an appointment with Kevin or whoever you feel you want to talk to, George, Kevin, whoever it is, and they will take the time to explain it to you. We cannot do it at this meeting, like I just explained to you, but because you see it in a budget does not mean we've spent the money.
First of all, I didn't ask for clarification, I was just making a comment.
Too many times in this public, because we are talking about an item, the public assumes we've already signed off on it and we're just giving you some information that we've already done. It's not the case. When we talk about an item, it means we're talking about it, we haven't decided anything. Too many times, I have heard people say, you've already done this. We haven't done this. We haven't signed off on any $20 million contract yet for the DM. Too many times. Please have a seat, thank you for your comments, we will take them. If you need more information, I advise you to please go into the office and they will take care of you, okay? Okay, thank you. Is there anybody else from the public that would like to comment on item 4A?
All the public spoke.
I think all of them have. At this point, I'm going to close the public participation part of this. I'm going to come back to the directors after hearing the public's comments, even though we did have conversations going. Is there anything else that any of the directors would like to ask?
Well, I just want to point out that one of the reasons we were in dire straits was because we didn't have the money to do the plant and get out of the. The violations is what were going to bankrupt us, not our expenses. If we start getting $10,000 violation fines, they would put us out of business. And that was the only reason that we were going to go bankrupt.
It's hard to take two sentences, put them together, and then make one sentence that you want to have happen. That's the biggest problem that I see in the public. They, you take information from two places, two sources, two things, and then the person you talk to on the street, put it all together, and that's where we seem to get our information from. All information is available clearly, written down or on record or on tape. You can hear anything that you want, the actual information here at the district.
I would like to make a comment.
Please.
And then I'm going to make a motion. But there has been no 47% increase. I don't know where public gets their information, but public needs to prove that instead of just spouting it out. Look at the bills, exactly, look at the bills. Show us. I move that we adopt the financial plan for fiscal year 2016, 2017 as presented by Kevin.
A second, Ted.
Director Duncan, you had one more.
Yeah, I had a comment. One of the reasons we're two months late is because the public wanted workshops on the budget. So we did take the time to do the workshops and we had a total of four people show up at a day meeting and a night meeting. And so that was one of the reasons we are late on the budget. It was due to that, not, the public wanted more transparency.
Our budget's been ready for a while.
It's been ready for a long time, but you guys wanted more transparency and then four people showed up for two day, for two different meetings total. And so that's the reason it's late. But we're still far ahead of a lot of other entities that haven't approved their budgets. Just look at the state, just look at the federal.
But we're just looking at PID.
We're far ahead of them.
It's on the table.
Okay, that was my comment.
Thank you. Any more comments from any of the directors?
Call for the question.
Roll call, vote please.
Director Henn?
Yes.
Vice President Hesse?
Yes.
Director Jacobson?
Yes.
Director Kellow?
Yes.
President Corolla?
Yes, passes with a vote 5-0. Thank you, directors, for approving the budget. Thank you, Kevin, for your very, very hard work on this in holding the public meetings, the workshops. I appreciate you doing that. I wish we could have seen more people here for those workshops, that would have been great, get a little more input. And once again, I encourage the public to please come down, get your information from the source, not from somebody on the street or what you heard or what's read, because sometimes that information just isn't correct. Please come down here, the source. They will give you an honest answer every single time. They're not in the business of lying up there at the front desk. The information is public record. You can get the exact information or numbers or details or anything you want any day of the week. So please, get your answers from there, please, okay?
This is a rare time for me. I normally have children days, nights, and weeks.
We're not into public comments, so.
Okay, any day you want, you can come. Okay, directors' comments? Any directors' comments? Anybody, I'm commented out.
None for me.
None, this time I'm going to adjourn this meeting.